Go ahead whenever you're ready.
Ready, okay. Welcome to the St. Louis County Planning Commission Virtual Public Hearing. This meeting is for the purpose of hearing presentations on petitions for rezoning or requests for special procedure permits. I'm Wayne Hillsinger, Chairman of the Commission. In addition to the other members of the Planning Commission, I would like to introduce Jacob Trimble, Acting Director of Planning and the planner is assigned to tonight's petition. The Commission will not make a decision on petitions heard this evening. Normally, the Commission will receive staff reports and make a decision on tonight's petition at the next executive meeting in late April or early May. Additional comments, letters, and petitions submitted to the Department of Planning within two weeks of this meeting will be distributed to the Planning Commissioners in their executive meeting agenda packet. If additional information is required, the decision may be delayed. Planning Commission's recommendation will then be forwarded to the County Council, who has responsibility for the final decision. The meeting will observe the following guidelines. Planning Department staff will show photos of the petition site. Then the petitioner will present their request. They will be allotted 15 minutes. And members of the public will be able to speak. Speakers will be allowed three minutes. Please note, you may only speak one time. To indicate you wish to speak, click the raise hand icon to the right of your name on the participant list. Please keep your remarks brief and avoid repetitive or seconding presentations. After all opposition speakers have spoken, only the petitioner will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal to answer questions and points raised by other speakers. The Commission may ask questions of any speaker. After the meeting concludes, a survey will appear allowing you to indicate whether you are in favor, in opposition, or with concern regarding tonight's petition. This is not a vote and is not binding on the Commission or the County Council. The purpose is to make the crowd count part of the record for each petition. And with that, we'll hear tonight's first petition, which is PC 10-22 Gregory and Lois Manns.
Good evening. PC 10-22 Gregory and Lois Manns is a request for a special business permit in the R5 Residence District for a .18 acre tract of land on the south side of Gravoy Road west of Vassal Drive. And because the Planning Commission hasn't seen a request for a special business permit recently, the department thought it would be beneficial to remind everyone of the intent of the special business permit procedure. This is not a change in zoning. Rather, the intent is to provide a voluntary and alternative means for existing single-family dwellings to be reutilized for office or commercial services, where certain sites' characteristics may have rendered these properties less than suitable for residential purposes. Lots considered for the SVP procedure must front the right-of-way of a four-lane or wider state or county road and have direct access on that four-lane or wider road or an outer road within the same right-of-way. And the permitted uses allowed by a special business permit is very limited. So, as you can see from the county context map, this site is in South County. And there you can see it outlined in red on the aerial. From the land use map, you can see that Gravoy Road is fronted with a number of retail and office uses, as well as auto-related uses. And there is single-family residences developed in the R5 District on either side of Gravoy Road, as well as some fronting Gravoy next to the petition site. I'd like to also point out that the site for PC 13-22, which is, you'll hear about later in this public hearing, is to the west, just a few blocks down on Gravoy Road from this site. Here's a second aerial where you can see some of the commercial uses, as well as some of the residential development. This is looking south at the site. You can see the public hearing sign. Gravoy Road is to my back. This is looking west up Gravoy Road. Looking north across Gravoy. This is looking east down Gravoy Road. That's towards the intersection with Weber Road. Looking south into the site at the existing garage. This is looking west, kind of at the side of the property, towards the abutting neighboring residence. This is looking south into the yard area of the property. This is looking southeast at the intersection with Vassal Drive. Looking west into the site. Looking northwest at sort of the rear area of the property. Looking southwest at another adjoining residence. And looking south into the subdivision that is behind this property. And now I believe we have a petitioner's presentation.
Okay, thank you, Abby. Is the petitioner here?
Mark, I've just made you the presenter.
Great, thank you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay.
So you'll have to click Share down by your mute button and then PowerPoint or whatever app you're using.
Okay. Share. Can you see my screen now, Mel?
Not yet.
Okay, you might be delayed.
Oh, okay.
Hi, show from the beginning. How about now? Good?
I don't see it.
Okay.
Click Share and then click PowerPoint again?
I did, but we're gonna go back and do it again, I guess. So, Share. Oh, maybe I'll click it.
Oh, here comes, here comes.
There's two Share buttons there. Good, okay.
I can see your screen now. Yes.
Okay?
Yep.
Thanks, Mel. Appreciate it. Good evening. I'm Mark Doring. And we are at the Doring World headquarters in South County, 4850 LeMay Ferry. On my left side is Lois Manns, and on my right side is Greg Manns. And they are the owners, proprietors of the Farmers Insurance Discussion this evening. And I'm gonna hand it over to Lois to tell us a little bit about her business.
All right, so I have been in business for over five years in Afton, located right by the Afton Plaza Nine Mile Garden Dollar Tree area. I sell auto, home, life, commercial, and specialty insurance. I was Agent of the Year last year, and I'm an award-winning agency. I'm very active in the community. I have an annual 500 suits for 500 soldiers that every year, we've been doing this for five years, that we give away brand-new suits to area veterans and active military. I donate snacks for the firemen and police officers in Afton area, and then I connect them with Heroes Care. I do volunteer with Afton LeMay Chamber of Commerce, and I was a past board member for three years with them. I'm a current board member of Heroes Care and a member of the Afton Elks. And then I'm also a member, a board member of the South County Police Business Association. So I keep pretty busy in the community. We did meet with the President of the HOA in the subdivision, and she likes the improvements that we're gonna make. She also said she personally favors having a special business permit in there instead of the home being vacant. It was vacant for over 100 days before we bought it, so we just want to improve that in the neighborhood. We do have letters of support from the Afton Fire Chief and the Chief Boss, and then the St. Louis County Police Captain, Captain Means. We do also have an Afton LeMay Chamber of Commerce letter of support, just showing how we are such good in our community and how we want to give back and the longevity that we want to stay in the community is, you know, for a long time to come. And then just the positive image and growth of the Afton community and how we want to support where we have our business. We love Afton. We love everything about it, and we just want to stay as long as we can. And having this special business permit will really allow us to do that.
Thank you, Lois. This is an aerial of the site. Gravoy Road is located there. Weber Road is located there. Our current office is at 9335 Gravoy Road. And we'd like to move up the street to this location at 9202 Gravoy Road. So we want to move about 900 feet with this office relocation. Again, Gravoy Road's here, and this time Weber Road is located to the right of the screen. And Vassal Road is the intersection of Gravoy Road. And here's our subject tract, as Mel indicated, 0.1 acre. We're asking again for a special business permit, and we're in the R5 zoning district. The subdivision behind us is R5. Over here is the R5. That's the rooftop church. This is now a vacant lot. Used to be, I'm gonna date myself, Jack and Phil's Barbecue. This is a C2 Automotive Repairs, and we got the Quick Trip at the C8. Another gasoline station across the street from Quick Trip, C2. We have a pizzeria, C2, at the corner of Weber and Gravoy. And we have the bank facility located there, which is also a C2. And we are located in the Bayless School District. Here's a view from Gravoy Road, the entire house. Very, very nice house. When we're done, we're gonna look very much like this. We think it's a very pretty house, Rick, and we really like the look of it. This is directly across the street. This was the old Jack and Phil's. Now, this is a Google Earth picture, and I apologize. It has been torn down as shown earlier on the slides from Mel. So fortunately, that building's out there, but I did send some time there 40 or 50 years ago. This is the church across the street to the north of us, the rooftop church. And again, here's the Quick Trip, which is across the street into the south of us. This is an area of business. I was looking for businesses on Gravoy that use the SVP. And this one was down Gravoy about two blocks, okay? And then I found another one right at Weber and Gravoy, and that's the Gateway Alarm Company there. There are other businesses that operate out of homes in this area, but they really didn't look as nice as these, and they looked nowhere near as nice as what we're proposing, so I didn't show them in slide presentation. Again, this is our existing building. The building elevation is basically gonna remain the same. We're gonna put some additional parking in this area here, but we've got very limited of site work, so we fit in well with the neighborhood. We're gonna utilize the existing entrance. And we're also going to open up an entrance here, which is gonna be our accessible entrance. There are steps at the main door, and so we're gonna have a accessible entrance located here, so we can handle anybody that wants to come into our offices. We are allowed one business sign, 23 inches by 36 inches. We haven't really decided where we're gonna put that yet, but we'll work with staff on that. It's a relatively small sign, so we don't think it's gonna be very obtrusive whatsoever. Here's our site plan. And again, the existing entrance is gonna remain right where it's at. We're gonna put some additional parking, and it's gonna go to the right of the garage and also to the left, which is gonna allow us to pull in and park and also give us the room to maneuver our cars, to turn around, so we do not have to back out on the Gravoy. We can come out on the Gravoy face-first, make it a very safe situation. We are proposing a new sidewalk here. And we have three employees on our maximum shift. We are proposing five parking spaces, including one handicap. We're required four. So we're gonna have one and two parking spaces in the garage. That's gonna be for employees, obviously. And our third space is gonna be over here, and that's another employee parking space. Then we have a fourth here for a customer and a fifth here for a handicap space customer. We are extremely low traffic volume. If you think how many times you really go to your auto insurance salesman agent, you really don't go to their place very much at all, and that's the case with us. You call them, you do over the internet. Once in a while, people do walk in, but we are extremely low-volume use. Our hours are great. We're Monday through Friday only, no weekends. We start at 8:30, and we're gone by 5:00. So the neighbors love us. And again, just reiterating, we're allowed one business sign, 23 inches by 36 inches. So it's two feet by three foot sign. We have proposed landscaping, and we will submit a actual detailed landscaping plan separately to staff for their review. In summary, we're a local community business, and we enjoy and want to stay in Afton. We're a business that gives back continually to the community. Low-traffic generator. Very little walk-in traffic, and again, communication, mostly phone calls and emails these days. And our business hours, Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 5:00. And we want to keep the feel and look of the surrounding residential area with our building. And with that, we appreciate your consideration. If you have any questions, we will do our best to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions?
This is Bill Snade. Mark, or whoever. What is the occupancy on both sides of this parcel of ground? The house next door, is that residential? People living there?
That's residential, and an individual lives there.
And around the corner?
Same thing, yes. Right here, Bill. Behind us is residential, and across the street is also a single-family residential.
Okay. Thank you.
And yeah.
I assume the hours are typical eight to five kind of thing?
Yes, 8:30 to 5:00, Bill, and we've met with all three adjoining neighbors already.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Mark, I just got a quick question. Is this house part of the adjoining subdivision, or is it separate out of that?
No, it is part of the subdivision.
Okay, no indentures to worry about?
I haven't researched that. Well, we met with the President of the HOA, and she had no concerns at all. And it's one of these older subdivisions in Afton that most likely do not exist.
Right. When we bought the property, we did not see any indentures at all when we bought the property.
Okay, we will circle back and check into that again.
Yeah, the reason I asked, you know, when we had the Walgreens at Telegraph and Jaeger, that site had come out of the adjoining subdivision in order to go forward with the Walgreens, so.
We will verify that and send it on to the Planning Department.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the comment.
Anything else?
Wayne Keith here. Was there a business here before?
No.
Never was. I guess it was rental property?
No, an older gentleman lived there for years with his wife, and I believe his wife died. But then he had moved. He didn't really, he never parked in the driveway at all, parked on the side street. It was vacant for quite a long time before we bought it in December. So it was on the market for over 100 and some days, and with this market, that's quite incredible. So we definitely, it was vacant for a long time.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to comments. Mel, you wanna take it from here?
So if you would like to make a comment or ask a question, please hit the raise hand button next to your name on the participant list. It may also be in the bottom right-hand most, bottom right-hand corner of your screen. I've just lost. Okay, Lynn LaBabeau, you will be first. Lynn, you are unmuted to give your comments.
My comment isn't in regards to this. It's in regards to something else.
Oh, a later petition?
Yeah, it's in regards to that star liquor.
Okay, we'll come, we can come back to you then.
Right.
We will, okay, thank you. Okay, next will be Steve Hannah Camp. I apologize if I mispronounce your name. Steve, you are unmuted to give your comments.
All right, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I could not object to this proposal possibly any more than I do. One thing you've not mentioned is that this residence is at the entrance to our subdivision, and that's gonna turn everything into an eyesore, putting a parking lot there. I cannot object to this anymore. It's not fair to us. It's gonna decrease our property values. If you want an insurance office, put it in an insurance office. And I, this is just horrible. Absolutely horrible. And even if you are planning to landscape this and make everything so beautiful, like you say, what about the next person who buys it from you? Then what's it going to be? That house is a residence, and it didn't sell for that long because they were asking way too much money for it.
Okay, any other comments?
A couple other speakers. Sorry, our list is kind of, a lot of attendees tonight. Next will be Jonathan Dove. Jonathan, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Thank you.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. We are the residents of 9210 Gravoy, so the property directly next to it, across the street from where Phil's Barbecue was. Um, I haven't spoken to them in any manner, nor has my parents, who own a portion of the property, or my husband Jonathan. I haven't gotten to talk to them yet, the family here that's looking to put the business in the property. I guess I have a couple of concerns. One is the parking spot abutting my property right there. And how that will work with my use of my side yard with my pets, who get upset with people coming and going next to their property line. It'll really add to their noise level. And also with the, I tried to put a retaining wall in there years ago, and when we went to do that, there's a sidewalk laid under the ground about a foot underneath, and so my retaining wall didn't work. And so it's kind of sliding towards that other property, and I don't know how to fix that, especially if a parking space goes in next to that. So I would need to just talk to them about that. And I guess my other concern is just, I know this is just one building, but I think we're the last stretch of houses along there that are houses. And I know probably someday it will become a business, but I love that house. I bought it in 2003, and I love where it is. I love being there on that main road. And I'm just concerned that the other houses are gonna fall to businesses as well.
Carrie, thank you.
Ma'am, what was your first name, please?
I'm Jennifer. On the original contract, my last name would have been Zelch.
Okay.
But we're married now, and it says Dove. So it's Jennifer Zelch. And my parents, James and Donna Zelch, bought a portion of the house with me when I was unmarried. But now my and my husband live here, Jonathan and Jennifer Dove.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Next will be Vicki Bateman. Vicki, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm very concerned about this becoming a business. That is the entrance that is extremely dangerous to pull out onto Gravoy, as we already have the median being blocked with concrete. And the Quick Trip is there. There's an intersection there with a light that has multiple accidents already. And just about, oh, within the last two to three weeks, my sister was coming over to visit, and she was coming up Gravoy towards that house on the side of Gravoy that, where that house is, and witnessed a car pulling out of our subdivision and colliding with a motorcycle. Because if, when you pull out of that entrance and you look to the left, you have the median that you have to go around. You've got an intersection to the right. You've got that median to the right. And then to the left, there is a rise in the road, which creates a blind spot. So if there's more cars being parked at that house, that's gonna prohibit us from seeing what's coming over that hill on Gravoy even more. It was difficult when there were trees and cars there, but now is that to be a parking lot, that's, it's too busy of an intersection right there. I mean, it's already dangerous as an entrance or exit for our subdivision. And because so, I normally go to the entrance and exit on Weber. So I'm very concerned about that. And I'm also concerned, it's part of our subdivision, and I think it should remain a residential property. I don't think it needs to be turned into a commercial property. There's plenty of commercial buildings around in Afton that are available for rent. And I don't see any need to convert private residence into a commercial property. There, I mean, they're already at the strip mall down the street. I see no reason for them, I mean, I think they kind of jumped the gun buying the property when it was a residence, thinking it was gonna be turned into a business. But I'm very concerned that the accident issue will definitely increase from people pulling out of our subdivision. It's not the first one. It's just the most recent one that I'm aware of, and it was quite severe. And I just don't think this needs to be turned into a commercial property. It's too hard to see out of our entrance to pull out as it is. And that's my comment. I'll be very upset if this turns into a commercial property. I've owned a home at 9116 Coral Drive since 2005. So I will be very upset. And I agree that I'm concerned that the rest of that strip will turn into a commercial property like they did close to Federhoffers and across the street. Matter of fact, the property next to Federhoffers is already commercial, and it was for sale for a long time. So I don't understand if they really wanted a house for a commercial property. They could have had that, and it already had a business set up in the basement, two of them actually. So.
Okay, thank you.
Residential. I think it still needs to remain residential.
Hey, Melissa?
Okay, next will be Laura Fake. Laura, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Hi, this is Laura in John Fake. We live at 9027 Coral Drive, which is about five houses in the neighborhood from this corner. And we're not real happy about this proposal. I think you've paved a lot of green space. I think your parked cars are going to be an issue, like everyone else has pointed out, for making turns in and out of the neighborhood when you're trying to look at that oncoming traffic. There, it's very hazardous that there's something in your view line. I question the new sidewalk. What's that all about? Is that for overflow parking, which is also a problem? If you pull into our neighborhood and there's cars parked there, and you're trying to get out of the way of people on Gravoy, you round that corner, and there's a car parked there. That's not safe. Yeah, I'm just, I'm sad to see this happening to that corner. We don't like it at all.
Okay, next will be Pete Gaska. Pete, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Good evening. This is Renee Gaska.
Okay.
I am the mother of my daughter who lives on Vassal. She's unable to attend this evening. So I'm speaking on her behalf. I agree with all the other residents who are not for this proposal. I think this is an extremely slippery slope that is being offered. I understand this business might have a low profile at this time. have a low profile at this time, but again, if they sell, uh, if business picks up, it is a very dangerous intersection coming and going. Um, it's, it's to me going to take those property values and lower them. This is one of the cutest little subdivisions to me in Afton, and to put a business there really just seems very sad. Uh, there are so many other businesses, as these other people have pointed out, with these uh, uh, nice people to go to. Um, the house can be rehabbed and sold, I would think in a minute. It's just a darling house. Um, so I just want to put on for the record that uh, my daughter as well is uh, not in favor of this at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a couple more. Next will be Dan Lewandowski. Dan, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Um, I agree with all the people that are against this for the, you know, the same reasons, the traffic congestion, the danger at that intersection, you know, with the QT, the intersection of Vassal going across Graavoy and adding parking and cars in your line of view. It's just not, it's, it's a dumb idea, I'm sorry. Uh, you got a bank building now over at uh, Matilda and Graavoy that is vacant and could be bought and turned into um, an uh, insurance office. It's already a commercial building. So I agree with these people that of the subdivision that don't want to see it turned into a commercial property. But I think it's a safety issue more than anything. Like they said, pulling out of that subdivision. I travel that stretch multiple times a week. And there have been a lot of close calls when you come over that hill from, you know, coming in Graavoy to the Weber light. And it's just, it's just dangerous, and they don't need to add to it. So that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next will be Julie Steininger. Julie, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to comment. I am a twenty-four-year resident of the neighborhood, and that doesn't compare with the house we're talking about that has been a uh, private residence for eighty-two years. Uh, so I am not in support of it uh, becoming a commercial facility. Um, and I'd like to correct some misinformation. We um, uh, knew the residents of, of that house before they moved, and they actually had matching SUVs that they, that they parked in the garage side by side, so they were not street parkers. Um, a previous commenter uh, used the great phrase that I've written down here, that this is a slippery slope. Um, if this home um, that is surrounded by um, other residential homes is made commercial, what house is next? The next house on Coral, uh, the next house on Graavoy? So that's very concerning. Uh, my last comment, uh, that's great that you've spoken to the homeowners association president, but I think it's pretty clear from everyone's comments tonight, she does not represent uh, the views of the neighborhood. So thank you again for the opportunity to comment.
Great. Okay, the last name I see on the list for this petition is C. Anderson. So if you have not had a chance to uh, raise your hand to comment on this request, please do so. Um, otherwise, C. Anderson, I believe you are unmuted. Although I don't actually see that you have a microphone connected, so I'm, I'm not sure we'll be able to hear you. Um, if you try to connect, um, I actually have a ta- a message in the chat from another speaker. We will go to John Young. John, you are unmuted to give your comments. John, can you hear us?
Commercial one. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'm sorry. This is my first time attending one of these meetings. Um, I, I just wanted to comment uh, that I agree with my fellow residents of Afton. I, I think this is a bad idea. That is a very limited site, um, going eastbound on Graavoy, and people do uh, speed through that area. And I could totally see someone pulling out of that residential area, that residential spot, um, that corner, and causing um, many more accidents in that particular spot. I see a lot of people trying to turn left into that neighborhood, um, from going westbound on Graavoy. That would also uh, be a, a, an increase in the difficulty doing that. If anybody does park on that side street, I can't read what the side street is, that Vassal. Um, i- if anybody does park right there at the corner, that's going to greatly increase the chances for an accident. Um, just from the, the lack of width there in the road if someone parks there. So I, I do agree with my fellow residents. I think this is a, a beautiful house. I don't know why uh, it wouldn't sell. Um, I think it could possibly sell. Afton is a very hot market right now as far as real estate goes. I think it could be um, turned over into a, you know, another residential owner without any issues at all. And I, I would agree and support my fellow residents in this um, matter.
And what was your first name, ma'am?
Cynthia.
Cynthia, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, uh, John Young, can you, can you hear us? Otherwise, we have Dale Flanikin. Dale, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
I would just like to point out, I've lived, I, I live in the house just east of the proposed uh, petition. I've lived here for thirty-seven years. Um, I agree with the other residents of the subdivision that I don't think it's a safety issue for um, the people leaving the business, pulling out onto Graavoy, especially with the parked cars on the side just west of the um, residents there. Um, I think that's going to be an issue. I have an issue with the sidewalk going out toward the subdivision, the Graavoy Gardens subdivision. To me, that is telling, telling me that they plan on parking inside the subdivision, which is another issue. There's uh, the Afton Fire uh, District has problems even getting a fire truck through the subdivision with the amount of cars that are in the subdivision. Um, another issue that I have is just, I would like to know, I, I, I would like to get confirmation that the president of the HOH has given her okay for this business or for this residential house to be turned into a business. If that is true, uh, we need to find a new president, because she does not represent the subdivision. And I have serious concerns if she is really for the subdivision and not for something else. Thank you.
Okay, and then Jim Meehan. Jim, did you want to make a comment on this request?
Not on this request, sorry.
Okay, no, that's all right. Um, let me just double check. We had one speaker have to call in. Uh, Mr. Young, I think I've unmuted you.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Yes. I agree with the fellow residents of mine of Graavoy's Gardens, uh, one hundred percent, this shouldn't be turned into a business. I think, as you see in the south view in that, the entrance of the subdivision has a stone entrance. I think this could end up being a thing maybe like by crossing South County Mall, that raised jewelers or that jewelry store, where they moved in on the corner of that subdivision. I, it, this is a nice quaint bungalow-style subdivision, and I don't think a business needs to be put there. And I spoke to the HO, I've been a twenty-year resident on Vassal Drive there, and she is not for this. I'll be walking by foot with having everyone sign this. The reason why that house was for sale forever is probably because of the market and the way things are now. They're probably trying to get maximum value. That's why it was on the market for so long, but to, to, and I think they're revealing their cards by putting the sidewalk going into our subdivision. I mean, and the more parking, if this was such a low-key business, you wouldn't need more parking. I just think it, it's the wrong spot. Absolute wrong spot. I'm, I'm finished with that.
Is that the end of your comment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hilsinger, I think that is all of, of the speakers for this petition. Um, if you are hanging around for another petition on the agenda tonight, please click the raise hand button to lower your hand back down. Um, that way we can see who wants to speak for the other petitions in between.
Okay, was that, uh, Mark, do you want to offer rebuttal?
Sure, thank you, Wayne. Um, first of all, the uh, special business permit is uh, ordinance approved by San Luis County. We think we fit into that very well with the setup as previously discussed. Um, as for the safety on Vassal Road, yes, directly to the west, there is a significant hump, and it's very difficult to see when you pull out of Vassal Road or into Vassal Road. Um, and they may have a, a stone monument which may add to that difficulty in sight. However, our proposal, I don't see how our proposal is going to affect that safety whatsoever. Our car parked there sits back about fifteen feet from the edge of the pavement. By the time you pull up the Vassal Drive, that car should not be blocking the site distance looking to the western Graavoy Road. But again, yes, there is a significant hump there, and Vassal Road, when you pull out there, you need to be quick. And it's been that way since I went to Salem, Wisconsin school back in nineteen seventy-four. But um, I don't see how we're actually affecting that. As for the sidewalk, um, going to the subdivision, when we originally presented this to staff, there's a discussion of the ordinance that um, if you needed one more parking space, you could have a parking space within five hundred feet of your site, and that would count towards your required parking. However, we redid our site plan, and we have plenty of parking on our site to meet the requirements. So the sidewalk is not needed, nor is that one parking space that would be allowed by ordinance needed. So we'll be happy to remove that sidewalk. It's not really a concern to us at all at this point. Um, as for the HOA discussion, uh, Melissa will address that.
So, um, I mean, I, we sat down and talked with her, and I got an email saying that she was in favor of having it, the home occupied instead of sitting vacant. Uh, she said she knows that, that um, we would be a low-traffic um, office. And actually, it's a special business permit still a resident. So uh, that was just what I uh, found from her. I don't mean to cause any problems with the HO president, HOA president. So that's just what uh, was uh, spoken with us, with her. But, but there is like on the um, so on the west side of our house, of, of that house, there's actually cars parked on that sidewalk there. So if you're talking about any kind of site distance problem, it's the cars that park right there in front uh, on the side of that sidewalk, and we would be well back within our space.
So cars pull over on the shoulder of the road there?
Yes.
Overlives there approach right out here. Yeah, so that, so people park on the shoulder of the road on the, lots past us. Um, one other comment I forgot to address, when the uh, neighbor to the um, west of us uh, talked about having a retaining wall and some great problems. They're wo- willing to work with them, obviously, any way to help fix their problem and to make our site better and more attractive to the area.
And including like a fence, uh, anything that could help.
Correct. Okay.
That it?
Yes.
All right, thanks. Um, and that concludes uh, this petition.
I apologize, Wayne. We actually have one more speaker.
Oh, okay.
If you, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, um, Tom Doyle. Tom, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Uh, yes, this is actually Charis Doyle.
Thank you.
My, my husband Tom and I have lived in our home since nineteen ninety-one and raised three children here. We love the cozy, charming nature of our neighborhood. And I had already expressed concerns to a gentleman that was working on the property uh, recently that I really didn't care for the fact that there was going to be a business right at the entrance of our subdivision, which really will alter, you know, the entrance of our subdivision in looking less residential. And I was trying to keep an open mind about this, but actually in seeing the plans, and when you look at your map, it honestly looks now like there's as much concrete as there is foam. And I, I'm concerned about the amount of driveway space. I'm concerned about the sidewalk that lea- needs to lean over to the, the entrance there coming in. I don't really understand if there's very little traffic that you're anticipating, why additional concrete would have to be added to add a sidewalk. And I expressed to the gentleman that was at the home, working on the home, that the same thing that someone else earlier tonight mentioned. No matter who this is that is interested in purchasing it now and what their intentions are, once the zoning or whatever it is in effect, how do we know what will happen down the line if another business comes in there? And I also do agree that the other remaining homes along there are just going to be very susceptible to a business environment, and those homes all do belong to our subdivision. So we're very much opposed to it, and I am in complete agreement with the um, challenges pulling out of our entrance heading, you know, in the direction of that home. Um, that it's just already very challenging, and I know that there are, you just mentioned, other homes along the stretch there that do park cars in the easement, but they're not right at the entrance. Those aren't the ones that would be really blocking our sightline onto Graavoy. Really, that corner home would have a substantial effect on the safety of pulling out of our subdivision. So A number one, I really think it's going to take away from the charm of this older subdivision over eighty years old that's very unique and businessfy it. I just don't, I'm, we're not at all in favor of this. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
That is all the comment now.
Okay.
Wayne, I have a question. This is Gary Elliott. Uh, looking at this, the entrance is going to remain the same as it was as a residence, correct? You're going to have the same entryway to leave and go in and go out. That didn't change, correct?
Correct.
And you've added free parking spaces?
Yes.
So when they say that there's a danger, wouldn't the danger be the same if it was a residence that had a husband and wife, each one had a vehicle, and they had a teenage child that had a vehicle? And you have three vehicles? I mean, I don't, unless I'm missing something there. It's, and I don't think you anticipate having ten or twelve vehicles lined up there.
No.
And also, how many people would be working out of that office? How many employees total will be in the office?
I have one part-time, another part-time, and one full-time, and myself. Part-time meaning they're there like maybe two days a week at different hours. And then uh, I'm there probably half the time because I'm not selling. And then I have one full-time employee that's there uh, from, uh, she takes lunch, but from there from eight, eight-thirty-five.
So what do you think, you, you, average day, you, you're mainly there two, two people, three tops?
That, three tops, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And then we would utilize the garage as parking.
Okay. Anything else to be added? Being done, that concludes this petition, and we'll go on to PC eleven-dash twenty-two fifty-seven fifty-seven LLC.
We'll just give it a second for the PowerPoint to come back up.
Good evening, this is PC eleven dash twenty-two fifty-seven fifty-seven LLC, which is a request for an amended C-eight grand commercial district for a one-point-six acre tract located on the south side of Lindbergh Boulevard, west of Five Oaks Parkway. You can see from the county context map, this parcel is located in, in South County. The aerial has the parcel outlined in red, you can see it along Lindbergh. The land use map provides some, some of the context. Directly to the north, across Lindbergh is the municipal line for Green Park. You can see the, the south side of Lindbergh Boulevard is, is developed with commercial, retail, auto sales. And then behind that commercial development and, and behind the subject site is single-family developments as well as four county parks. This aerial kind of zoomed in, you can see some more of the surrounding context. You can see the commercial nature of the, the parcels fronting on the Lindbergh and then the single-family development to the south behind those Lindbergh fronting parcel. This view is standing on, on the sidewalk off Lindbergh. I'm looking south into the site, you can see the existing office building structure and the public hearing sign. This view would be just turning around and looking north across Lindbergh. On the other side of Lindbergh is the Green Park City Limits. This view would be looking east along Lindbergh, you can see the street going there is Five Oaks, Five Oaks Parkway, excuse me. Then this view is, is standing at the, at the intersection of Lindbergh and Five Oaks Parkway, looking southeast at the adjacent commercial development. And then standing in the same spot, just looking south along Five Oaks Parkway at the eastern limit of the property. And then this view would be looking west across Five Oaks Parkway towards the subject site. And then this view is, is south along Five Oaks Parkway at, you know, you can get, get an example, see the character of the, the single-family homes behind the parcel. And then this view is, is in the same spot, looking west at the southern limits of the, the property. And then this is interior to the site a little bit, still along the southern property line. And then this view is looking southwest, so on the, the western, or interior of, of the site, but sort of the, the west side of the building. You can see an existing detention basin. And then this view is looking west. And this is looking east from that parking area back towards the existing building.
Really?
And this view is looking northwest, you can see some of the existing parking and then the adjoining commercial development. And then this view would be looking west along Lindbergh. And same, same thing, we're looking west, we're just a little further east along Lindbergh. And the petitioner has a presentation at this time, I believe it's Mark again.
Okay.
Okay, Mark, you should be able to share your screen now. Yep, there it goes.
Get better at it now.
Yeah, you're an expert, there it is.
Until next time. Good evening, again, Mark Doring here and now sitting next to me is Nick Bond of Stephen F. Bond Realty. I'm going to ask Nick to tell a little bit about the vision that Bond Realty has for this site. Hey, Commissioners, obviously, this is Nick Bond, I'm one of the owners of five-seven-five-seven South Lindbergh Boulevard. We have been serving South St. Louis County since nineteen seventy-five, doing day-to-day brokerage work, owning real estate in and around five-seven-five-seven South Lindbergh. We've always had our eye on the asset, we've always looked at it as an underperforming, underutilized building since previous ownership had it for the past ten-plus years. We think he certainly didn't maximize the asset, given the retail visibility it has. Our ask today is, as you know, with the ever-changing office environment today is to just have the, the ability to maximize the possible users of the building to allow medical. Thanks, Nick. Yeah, so again, also asking for is an amendment to the C-eight almost, and we're just asking to allow medical use. The original ordinance back years ago just had office use and didn't specifically say medical uses and that's what we're asking for today. So Lindbergh Boulevard is located up there and again, Five Oaks Parkway is directly to our east. This is our subject tract, it's one-point-six-eight acres, it's existing C-eight and we want to amend that C-eight, basically, basically amend the C-eight to include medical uses. We're really not proposing any site improvements as to the, especially to the rear of the property, it's all going to stay the same. The neighbors are going to see the same thing that they see today, except we are going to beautify this property substantially. Again, to the south of us is R-three, residential. To our west is the Red Lobster Zone C-eight and then Enterprise Bank is to the west of that. Across the street is the Walgreens and again, that is in Green, the city of Green Park. The unoccupied Old Steak and Shake, we used to go in high school, it's in Green Park over there. They have a strip store on the St. Louis County side, that's C-eight. And we also have office directly across Five Oaks Parkway with some retail in it, which is C-eight. And then this little area here is a Valvoline C-eight oil changing location. This is a picture of the front of it and as you can see, it needs some help, this is from Google Earth here. The building needs a refreshed exterior, we're going to do that. The parking lot needs a lot of maintenance and we're going to do that. And the sign needs to be thrown away and we're going to do that. This again is a Valvoline that's adjacent to us. They access their property through a cross-easement, which I will show later on in the site plan, that cross-easement where we remain exactly it is today and as easement was granted. Across the street again is Walgreens and the shopping plaza over there. And there's the abandoned Steak and Shake. And this is looking down Five Oaks Drive and you can see our building to the right and the office building to the left. This is a picture down Five Oaks Drive showing the first resident that adjoins to us and our existing building. And it actually shows that there's a substantial mature tree buffer between us and that home. Same picture here discussing about the residence to the south of us. We're actually fifty-three feet from building to building, so a pretty good distance there as well as again, existing vegetation. And again, it has mature trees all along this area in the back, which we are going to remain just as it is. And then also to further screen the resident behind it, there's already an existing five-foot site-proof fence abutting the parking lot to keep the screening in that area for the residents. The site plan, we have an existing two-story building, it's almost eighteen thousand square feet and that's nine thousand square feet per floor. And we're asking to have it up to half-medical and half-office. The site improvements, again, we want to add one parking space because we need that for our required parking. And that'll be at the front of the building and I'll show you that in a minute. We're going to resurface and clean up the entire parking lot, we're going to provide new concrete walks and we're going to provide a new building front, which I'll show you momentarily also. We're going to utilize the existing entrance. Okay, there's an existing sidewalk along Lindbergh, that sidewalk is going to be removed by MoDOT and a new sidewalk is going to be replaced under, by MoDOT. And that'll happen within the next twelve months. The existing parking lots in this area are going to use in place. And again, that's the location for the ingress easement to get to the Valvoline oil change. We propose trash enclosure, which would be fully screened back in this area, close to the existing one, but we slid it slightly. And again, we're going to add one parking space in that location right there, we'll still have a green island there, but we actually need one parking space to meet the parking requirements for half-medical and half-office. So we have seventy parking spaces that are required and also seventy parking spaces that are provided and this includes the four handicap spaces. And again, the existing monument sign will be replaced with a brand-new monument sign. Back here is the existing stormwater detention, it's been there since the building is built, since we're not doing any changes, any additional pavement except for one parking space. This attention should be deemed adequate by MSD, although that will pan itself out when we do go through actual construction documents. The landscaping plan, now, this is a little tricky, but the, that's the front existing parking lot where my cursor's going and the existing office is back here. But we are going to make this a first-class building, as Nick said, this building, I remember this building was built, it's a beautiful building, it just hasn't had the tender loving care that it should. And we're going to bring it back and make it something that South County can actually be proud of again. Here's the elevation of the landscaping of the building and how we're going to handle that. And again, we'll go through staff with all the details of this and make sure that it meets the existing zoning ordinances for the new landscaping requirements. So in summary, we're going to do a major refreshing of a worn-out property. We have new building front and a new parking surface and new landscaping. And we're going to provide new tenants to a building that has few tenants. Major part of revitalization of this part of South Lindbergh, this part of South Lindbergh is starting to look a little aged, we want to be a major part of that. We are excited about this proposal, appreciate your consideration. And I've got to state something right now, I had elevations and I'm not sure where they ended up in my PowerPoint, so if you give me a minute, I'd like to show the front building elevation if I can find it quickly, okay? And I apologize. Okay, so. Shoot over that existing, that new building elevation. If you would go ahead with the questions, it'll give me a chance to find the elevation for the new building, we have a rendering, it's very impressive. And some reason I didn't get it in here, so I apologize.
Okay, we'll go, we'll go ahead. Commissioners, any questions?
I have one, Wayne, this is Bill Ballard.
Go ahead, Bill.
Have you identified tenants already?
No, sir.
You do not have? Okay, with this, I don't know if you can ask this or should I be asking this to Mr. Turnbull? Would there be treatment of people with special need, medical need? I guess you can't answer that if you don't have a tenant, yeah.
Yeah, possibly, but at this point, I wouldn't be able to answer that, sir. Is there, is there a reason you asked, is there something I can, I can answer that would help?
No, I mean, you know, if you're treating people with problems, special need problems like drugs or anything like that.
I, I understand, yeah. We, we don't have anybody yet, sir, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
I had a question, Wayne, Gary Elliott. Will there be any kind of a need for special treatment of medical waste or anything?
Again, sir, until we have the tenants signed, I, I won't know that, that being said, I'm not, I'm not entirely sure what medical waste. Just trying to think what, what sort of medical waste we'd be disposing of at the property.
Oh, blood, blood.
Gotcha.
Fringes, anything biological or anything that would create some type of a hazard.
Gotcha, I, I think there's probably a very good likelihood that there, in the event we do a medical deal, you know, there could be blood, like blood draws and stuff like that.
But until you get your tenants, you can't answer the question, right?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Anyone else? Do you know what, Mark, do you find?
I have a question, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Couldn't get my mute button off, yeah. What are the planned hours for this? Would it end up being like a urgent care there, that's medical?
So, great question, sir, yes, I, some sort of urgent care, physical therapy, you know, physicians, you know, it, it's not big enough, it's not conducive to any, you know, emergency, emergency, higher-density medical use like a hospital. When we envision it, yes, I, I, I see something along the lines of urgent care physicians.
It could be twenty-four hour.
I, I, again, I, I suppose, I actually don't think urgent cares are twenty-four hours. So I, I wouldn't want to say, say that right now, I, probably very unlikely, but I, I suppose.
So it's undefined as to what the hours would be for the, the, the building? It's undefined, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Can you see the building rendering?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. It's very, very nice and very good improvement of the building.
Any questions on that? All right, seeing none, we'll go to comments. Mel?
Okay, so if you'd like to comment or ask a question about this request, please click the raise hand button next to your name on the participant list. It might also be in the right, the bottom right-hand corner. If you don't see it, you can send me a message in the chat, I'm the generic host and I will unmute you. We will start with Chris Cuban. Chris, you are.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Can you hear me? Perfect.
Yes.
All right, so I am the treasurer of the Five Oaks Subdivision HOA and I can't tell you how much the residents of our community are excited and really appreciate and have an overwhelming support of this new development as it was pictured in their coming soon sign. Over the last ten years or so, we have dealt with a negligent owner who has caused nothing but problems with this property, not only allowing grass to grow over two feet on the property, but trash to be with, withstanding throughout the entire property. It has been negligent for, for many, many years. So we're excited that there is a new owner and we truly appreciate the plans that you have put before us today. We do have several questions, I guess. Number one is the type of medical use. The concern is that, is this going to be a dispensary or is this going to be surgical offices? Or the, the concern about the dispensary is that every house that backs up to this property has grade school children and there's a bus stop that's right next door. So we would request and ask the, the commission not to approve a dispensary in this location. Couple other requests that we have is that the retention pond in the back of the property has stagnant water that breeds substantial mosquitoes during the summer and the fall months. We would request that the property be, I guess, required to spray for mosquitoes during the high-peak times. I know that's a little above and beyond, but it is a concern that all of the residents have the backup to this property. We were going to have a request specifically to the grass length due to the problems of the previous owners. However, we understand this, this new tenant, we, we hold in high regard and hope that they would take care of their property, like it looks like they have plans to really revamp the entire property. One other concern that we have is that currently, I believe, trash pickup at this property has been at four or five in the morning. We'd like you to try and restrict trash pickup to after six-thirty AM just to be a courtesy to the residents behind the property. And I, I guess the only last. And I, I guess the only last thing that I'd like to say is that I know it's probably impossible or improbable at this point because it's in front of you as the commission, but the neighborhood here, the residents have expressed an interest that we would really like a coffee shop in this building as well, or maybe a cafe. So if that's something you guys can put in the plans, we'd, we'd appreciate that. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
Okay, next will be Glenn Hendrickson. Glenn, you are unmuted to give your comments.
All right. Well, I kind of want to just second Chris's comments, and we, we are excited that it is a new owner, as this has been a nuisance property, and I, I won't continue to go on the issues that we have with it, so we are excited about that. And I do appreciate all of you asking the questions about urgent care and things like that, because those were actually things that were on my list. But I, I don't know if they can answer this right now, but since they are going to have this biohazard risk, are they, have they had it put in their plans that they are going to do a more secure way of protecting the outside trash dumpsters from the invasion of animals and things like that, and is, are they planning to switch the trash pickup to a biohazard company specifically? And, and the reasons we're thinking about this stuff is because currently the trash cans aren't protected at all, and anything can get in there, whether it be people or animals, and we just wouldn't want that type of items, you know, floating into our yards and, and things like that, so. But other than that, I had more questions, but you guys already asked them, so I really do appreciate your help. I think that's really, uh, that's really all that I had.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff Gibbs.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, guys. You know, we're pretty excited about the plans, I think in general, kind of echoing what Chris and Glenn said. I'm also a trustee in the subdivision along with Chris. Now, the only thing I, I would add to this, I would like to get a little more information about the hours of operation. I think one of the planning members asked the question, and it seems like it's somewhat undefined at this point. That's really the only issue that I have. It would be nice to know, possibly get some predefined hours of operation so that maybe it doesn't morph into some sort of twenty-four hour type of operation. You know, maybe something along the lines of six AM to seven PM or eight PM or something of that nature. And I do believe that urgent cares operate along those lines, I'm not quite sure, but and I guess the only, the, the only other question I had was the, the reason behind seeking the medical change or the, the zoning change to medical was just, was this just to give you more optionality as far as potential companies, lessors, and then also, I just want to kind of add on to Chris's point. You know, we, we as a subdivision has always wanted some sort of cafe, coffee shop in that location, and I just wanted to add on my interest as well. So thank you for com, or giving me the opportunity to comment.
Okay, thank you. We'll have him answer that on rebuttal.
I don't see any other speakers at this time.
Okay, Mark?
I'm sorry, I'm going to have Nick answer the first two questions, and then I'll take it.
Okay.
Yeah, first off, I'd just like to say, thank you guys for the comments, and I'm, it's, it's great to hear that, that you guys are in, in favor of what we're trying to do here. We really hope that, that the final product will be something you all are proud of and, and support us moving forward. The medical.
Well, the medical hours.
Oh, yeah, um, until, it, it kind of is going to get back to until we find the tenants, we're, we're really not going to know, we think. Back to the previous gentleman's comments, we think it'll be a six to nine scenario. But, and like any other traditional medical office building in the area. We, we're, we're asking for medical because of the, the ever-changing office environment that's going on in the world today. Having the ability to also speak with medical users in South County really helps our ability to move forward with this project. If we're handcuffed to, you know, law firms and, and architects and your traditional smaller office users, it, it, it handcuffs our ability to move forward with this project. Allowing medical users just allows us to go after a, a broader pool of potential tenants, to get the project finished and open and operating in a timely manner. In addition to that, I think, did you say you're happy? We'd be happy to have a coffee vendor too. Yeah, by the way, I, I apologize. We, we, we would love a Dunkin' Donuts, a Starbucks, a Colby's Coffee. We think it'd be a fantastic addition to the, to the property. We just got to get them to want to go, so we, we would love to do that as well. Under the discussions of medical, and I have my office over sitting here in South County, we have medical users, we have two of them. They have special pickup for biohazard every day. They have a lock box that they use in the, um, every day, someone comes from one of the labs and picks up those things, those things are not discarded into the general trash cans, okay? So they're handled very specifically by the doctors in the approved way that the American Medical Association says those disposals must be made, so that's really not a concern, and that'll be handled by, again, the doctors who are licensed. We're not asking for a dispensary, and a dispensary, I believe, Mel, and you can help me out, would not be approved. There's probably a special bar for dispensaries in addition, now what we meet, Mel.
Right, I'll just say that, so medical marijuana dispensaries are specific land use and would not fall under a medical office, would not be permitted under that land use.
Thank you. The retention pond, we'll be happy to spray for mosquitoes and clean it up. We want to be good neighbors, and we in fact, a dirty pond doesn't do us any good getting tenants either, so we're, we're going to clean it up. We will keep the glass grass very well cut, and it's required by ordinance to be cut, whether you write it into this ordinance or not, okay? So it will be done. Trash pickup after six thirty AM is a little tough one because we're limited by county council, who we can have pick up our trash, and we can't really tell them when they come by. On all office buildings, trash is picked up during nine hours, so trash could be picked up maybe six, maybe seven, but we really don't have a whole lot of control over that. And again, we'd be happy with office building hours from six AM to nine, and really, we don't expect anybody to show up at the office until eight, but you may get an occasional person coming in a little bit earlier in the morning. And I think that answers our questions, and if there's anything else, we'd be happy to answer those.
Okay, commissioners, any questions? All right, seeing none, that concludes this petition, and we will go on to PC twelve dash twenty-two Mason Lane LLC. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, PC twelve dash twenty-two Mason Lane LLC is a request for a change in zoning from M three to C eight for a zero point three six acre tract of land on the east side of Mason Lane, approximately one hundred and eighty feet south of Manchester Road. As you can see on the county context map, this site is in sort of Midwest County, it's in between Town and Country and DePere. And there you can see the site outlined in red on the aerial. On the land use map, you can see the various retail and office uses that front Manchester Road. Along Mason Lane near the subject site is office and medical office, well, a veterinary office uses developed as well as some auto-related uses. And here is a larger aerial where you can see some of the office and retail uses in the area. This is looking east into the site at the public hearing sign. This is still looking east at the existing office structure. Looking north up Mason Lane toward Manchester. Looking west across Mason Lane. This is south down Mason Lane. Looking south towards the neighboring vet clinic. This is looking east at the storage building that's on the site. Looking north at the existing structure. This is looking east at, down the property line toward the rear of the property. Still looking east at the rear property line. Looking north along the rear of the property. Still looking north at the rear area. Looking west. Looking north at some of the neighboring businesses. And looking west towards the entrance of the site off Mason Lane. And at this time, the petitioner has a presentation.
Good, thank you.
Skip, do you have the PowerPoint to share?
I think I do. I'm going to try to.
All right, I'm making you the presenter now. So then you'll just have to click share down by your mute button, and then PowerPoint or Adobe, whatever, yep, here it comes.
Well, we can start with this one. Well, first of all, Abby, thank you for your presentation. My name is Skip Dufour, and I'm an attorney, and I represent the petitioner, which is Mason Lane LLC. They are actually the owner of the property at twenty-two zero eight Mason Lane. It's owned by the Schulte family, Virginia John and Rachel, and they want to relocate and conduct their family business, Laser Me, at that location. I'll tell you a little bit about the family business. They have previously operated at one four zero one four Manchester in Baldwin. They've been there for the past ten years. More or less, the business, the family business has been in existence for over twenty years. And I'll explain the business itself to you in a little bit, but the family wants to relocate their business at this location to continue providing services to St. Louis County residents for the existing generation and the next generation, and then Rachel Schulte, of course, is the next generation of Virginia and John, and she plans to continue the business at that location as well. We are presently zoned M three. And I believe when the family bought the building, they didn't realize that they did need a change use to C eight to allow the personal services, office and warehouse uses that they propose at this location. So I want to. So that's looking at the building as it presently exists. We have superimposed the Laser Me signage over the existing signage, which is on the property. And that's pretty much the same, of course, of what Abby had in her presentation. I'll say that as you're looking at that, there are no exterior improvements that are suggested for this property. The, everything there is, is built and in place. The front building, the blue building, is consists of sixteen hundred and eighty-six square feet. And the storage or the warehouse facility building, which is the one that has the, the beige siding, is eighteen hundred and eighty square feet. When you look to the immediate right there, you see a, what looks like a double door, a garage opener, and that will be utilized as one of the fourteen spaces that are required for this site, and I'll show you when we go to the site plan where you can see where those are located. These are the services that Laser Me provides. They're, whoops. Maybe I hit too hard there, I'll go back, yeah, there, pushed it too hard. So it's a it's a business that provides cosmetic and laser rejuvenation treatments. Looks like I hit that again too fast. There we go. So all of these are personal services, it's, they're identified, there is laser hair removal, IPO, photo facials, which Rachel will have to explain if, what that is, if you've got more questions about exactly how that works and what it is. Non-invasive body contouring, non-invasive facials, micropigmentation, which is permanent makeup, and facial aesthetic enhancements, Botox. These are all non-invasive, essentially non-medical procedures that are FDA-approved. All the equipment is FDA-approved, and it's the services that the company has been preparing and rendering for twenty years plus. The, see if I can go to the one with the, the site on it here a little bit, because there's very little landscaping, and I don't want that one either. This computer is so sensitive when you push it. There's very little green space, there's just some lawn in the front, and I don't, not sure exactly what landscaping services would be required, but I mean, if we, if, if, whatever is required for planting more bushes or things like that, we're perfectly willing to do. All of the improvements, all the concrete improvements, everything is, is on-site the way it is, and I don't know if you can see the, the parking spaces that are provided, but to the rear of the main building, there are six spaces between the, what I call the main building, the existing frame building, and alongside the northern side of the warehouse building. And then there's one space at the perimeter as it abuts the adjoining property where there is the auto repair service. And there's five parking spaces immediately to the right of the existing frame building, including the handicap space. And then, of course, there's the one in the garage space itself, so that's how the fourteen spaces are, the requirement is met. I can say that the property is well manicured as it is. These folks will take great care and pride in it. They want to buy and own and keep their property within their own ownership as opposed to leasing what they have done over the years. We believe this site is very suitable to their operation. It's within their immediate trade area, and it will be, continue to provide a very valuable and enhancing service to the residents of St. Louis County. So we look forward to your approval, approval of this, your recommendation for approval, and if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners? Anyone? Quick, what, what's the number of employer, employees?
The employees, generally, they're three to five employees, Wayne, in an equal number of, of customers. The duration of the customers is anywhere from ten to thirty minutes.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's, it's a lot of in and out, and so as I say, three to five employees, a like number of, of customers at any point in time.
In Germany, what's the hours?
Hours of operation are nine to six, Monday through Saturday, no Sunday.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we're going to let you off easy.
You off easy, those other ones have been hard.
No.
Okay, Mel, you want to see if anybody would like to speak?
Yes, so if you would like to ask a question or make a comment about this petition, please click the raise hand button next to your name on the participant list or maybe in the bottom right-hand corner of the Webex app. or maybe in the bottom right-hand corner of the WebEx app. Or you can send a message to me in the chat. I'm the generic host. But at this time, I don't see anyone.
Okay, seeing no one, we do not need rebuttal.
Well, I told you I'd let you off easy. I promise.
Thank you. Alright, seeing no one, this will conclude this petition. And we'll go on to the last one, which is PC 13-22. And I won't attempt to pronounce those names.
Good evening. This is PC 13-22, Abir Masitif, with a request for a conditional use permit in the C3 Commercial District for a 0.36 acre tract located on the south side of Gravois Road and at the east quadrant of Niles Place. As you can see from the county context map, this parcel is in South County. And you can see the parcel outlined in red on the, on the south side of Gravois Road there. The land use map, similar to the first petition this evening, you can see the, that site, sort of the hatched parcel a little bit to the, the east along Gravois. South, there's the south side of Gravois is, is pretty well developed with retail and, and commercial uses with single family behind those. And then the, the north side of Gravois Road, similarly, has retail, commercial uses developed front in Gravois with and single family as you go further north. And then this aerial is, is a little closer look. You can see some of the surrounding development. Nine Mile Garden in Afton Plaza directly across, across Gravois Road, the single family to the south. The, the Afton Fire Protection District Building is, is directly to the east on, on the south side of Gravois. This view is looking south towards the existing structure. You can see the public hearing sign. And then this view would just be turning around and looking north across Gravois. And then this view is at the, the sort of northwest corner of the property, looking across Gravois Road. And then this view would just be turning and, and looking southwest at the adjoining commercial development. And then this view is turning around, looking east back towards the, the existing structure. And then this is a little bit further south on Niles Place, looking east towards the existing structure. And then this view would be looking south along Niles Place. And then this is at the, along the, the southern property line. And you can see the, the rear of the building. You're looking east. And then this view is along the, the eastern property line, looking west. Again, at the, the rear of the building. And then this view would be in that same position, just looking southeast. You can see the, the drive aisle and some of the parking lot and some of the, the firehouse building. And then this view would be in the, the northeast corner, looking southeast towards the, the Afton Fire Protection District Headquarters Building. And then this view is looking north across Gravois Road from that northeastern corner. And then this view is looking east. You can see the existing entrance to the site. And the petitioner has a presentation at this time.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Abdulai, I've made you the presenter. So you should be able to click the share button down next to your mute button and then click PowerPoint or whatever application you have the, the presentation in. Okay, it's coming up now.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Abdulai. I'm representing the owner for this project. This, as indicated in the presentation by the chairman, this is basically trying to, the existing building is a site that was used as an office solution business. And now we're trying to get it to be a liquor store. The owner currently operates another liquor store at another location. And then here, because an aerial view of the site. The bottom here, where we are simply doing some renovation in the interior of the building to convert it to have a storage facilities in the, at the restrooms. Restaurant was an existing one. The sales counter would be a new one. The lower level will not be operated, will not be open to the public. So it will stay as a storage. Or, you know, but mainly with the, the, the scope. How do you call it? The conditional use permit is requesting just for the legal license, you know, approval. We had a legalizing already approved for this project. But for some reason, from the time the owner bought the land, the property to the time he applied for his legal license, something came up and he was not able to get his license. He got his license, but it was not approved by, I think, by this county. As a result, we have to do this procedure to get his legal license approved, re-approved. Here, the site plan, there's no changing this on the site. The only thing we did is to renovate, remove and replace the pavement marking, the pavements on the site. We added a few more parking lots to help for any additional, you know, traffic that maybe needed here. But we really don't need that, you know? And also added a dumpster to clean up the site. There's, and there was already an accessible parking. Some additional covering has been added. And then basically, we tried to clean up the site. The pavement that is asphalt, try to convert it, make it to concrete so that I can grade well and drain well. And it also improved the property. Looked like this property has been out there, you know, for a long time not being used. So we have to do some work renovating the interior and the exterior. Let's see the next one here. That's about it. Any questions?
Commissioners, questions?
Mr. Hilsinger, if I may just say, just say something before the commission asks. I just want to clarify a little bit about the timeline for why this is in front of the commission. So this is a request for a conditional use permit for, to permit a liquor store because there is another liquor store within 1,000 feet. So the zoning ordinance does require a conditional use permit for those cases. There is a little bit of a timeline for this site in that they did apply for a liquor license before the store across the street was open. However, because they did not open and gain occupancy prior to the store across the street opening, that does kick in the requirement for the conditional use permit process. So they have, they've, they've been looking at this site for, for a significant period of time, however. But because the store across the street went through the entire process to, to, to gain occupancy during that time period, they, they are looking at needing that CUP.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, anyone?
Yes, this is Bill. Bill State?
Yeah, Bill.
Could we put the staff's photos back up? The one I'm interested in is, I believe, in the back of the building. It shows some asphalt that is by a stairs. And, and these pictures are so small, it's hard to really get a good look at it. So I apologize if I'm maybe looking at the wrong thing. But let's go to the next slide. I think it might be. There, that one. I know this, what, what is this zone right now?
It says C2.
It's the C3 Shopping District.
Okay. Okay. When I look at that, I just wonder if that even meets any county code drainage onto the property of the neighbor. It looks like to have that, there would have been a need for some sort of containment. Is anything being done about that as part of this proposal?
Not really. We did not address that issue. The only thing we did, as I said, is to revise, I mean, remove the asphalt and replace it with concrete. And all these spouts.
That's how this problem does it.
The downspouts are not, can you hear me?
No, I'm talking about the asphalt that tapers off and flows towards your neighbor.
Yeah, we're gonna take that out.
A ordinance that doesn't permit that.
That's why we're gonna go to put the new dumpster. So we're gonna raise that issue, that area up. We're gonna regrade that area so the dumpster is there. So whatever is gonna be draining back there will be on the grassy area.
That's what I say. The pictures that you're showing were so small, it's difficult to see those kind of improvements. But I, I would expect that that needs to be, the staff make sure that those kinds of things are, are being done with this. Otherwise, I, I, I think we're perpetuating a problem that should have never existed, I guess. The, where's the other location of your liquor store? The other liquor store?
The other location is on Bayless. Bayless and 50, 50, 55. I don't have the address. Oh, hey, let me see. Yeah, 4221 Bayless Avenue.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, hours of operation.
Alright, from what I gather, see, it might, it will be the same as the hours of operation or as the other property or the business. And that'll be. Let me confirm that.
What are they?
Actually, let me confirm that. I'm looking at the hours for that. It says nine, from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
How many days a week?
One day through Saturday. I think Sunday is closed.
And do you propose to sell anything besides liquor out of this store?
Maybe convenience store items like a donuts, cake, candy and stuff like that. That's what, that's my understanding.
Okay. Anyone else have anything?
Yeah, what, what, are, are you gonna improve the lighting in, in the back? What type of lighting in front of the parking lot and in, in the rear? I know the rear is not for parking for customers, but you still have this big parking lot in the back.
Well, I think there's lighting there already. All we need to do probably might convert those to LEDs so it can give better light, lighting effect. But we don't want to put light to, to create more, you know, glaring, you know, in the area there. So there are lights out there, as it is already right now. So we're gonna just improve those.
Okay, anyone else have anything? Okay, seeing none. Mel, you wanna go to questions?
Yes, so if you have a question or would like to make a comment regarding this petition, please click the raise hand button next to your name on the participant list. It might also be in the bottom right-hand corner of the screen. Or you can send me a message in the chat. I show up as the generic host. We will start with Lynn LaBob. Lynn, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Hi, thank you very much for, for your time. And as a host, I appreciate it. I'm a life, lifelong, I can't talk today, lifelong Afton resident over 40 years. Grew up and have lived here forever. Afton is, is it's the type of, it's an older community. We have, you know, we're really trying to move forward and with our businesses. Afton is, you know, beginning, beginning to move forward. And I say, let's not go back to liquor stores on every corner. You know, we have the Nine Mile Garden, the Barrels of Fun blends, bars, you know, up and down the 10 Mile, this, that, and the other. And Star Liquor, I have a problem with Star Liquor and Tobacco. Currently, they're at the location of Bayless and 50, Highway 55. They have the video lottery terminals. And that's a real concern for our family-friendly community here in Afton. The right position is the ordinance for the county is no. No to liquor stores within 1,000 feet. And there should be not, not an exception to that. You know, and my other concern is being a lifelong resident. Although I, I like the new developments and things along here. It's extremely, because it's an older community and we have a lot of traffic, a lot of congestion, a lot of alcohol and drugs within our area of these establishments. That's a problem. And going back, you know, going back to the first thing that, you know, that farmer's insurance. Let me, let me touch on that a little bit. You know, I think this is probably about the fourth time I've seen this, where there's a change in, in, with the planning commission. People purchase properties and then all of a sudden go, well, gee, I have to get the, the, get it changed. They, you know what? When I bought my residential piece of property, I have a lot of grant land out here in the back. And I have a storage unit right there. So I could have bought my property and decided I have enough ground here to put my own, my own storage unit. And I have a real problem with the commission or planning commission going, well, you know, they bought the property, so let's just go ahead and change ordinances or let anybody and everybody, you know, decide that whatever they want to do is what they want to do. And then a lot of, I guess a lot of times, I see that the dismo, you know, after they purchased the property, then they dismiss the homeowners. They dismiss the homeowners, well, the HOA, the firefighters, and the Chamber of Commerce. Well, number one, we pay, we're taxpayers. We pay your salaries. And I'll, I'll leave it at that. But I, I just think that, you know, people need to pay attention. We, the people, that, that, it's, you know, these are our neighborhoods. You guys don't live here. We live here. We live here. We, we've got a beautiful family-owned community. We love our community. And I feel for those people up there, you know, regarding that, that residential area. You know, and listening to them. That is wrong, 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 wrong. She should have never, she should have never bought that property, never bought that property. And again, we're just, we pay a lot in taxes in the Afton area. So my thought is, is that we have enough here in the congested area with all the liquor stores that is now starting to look like East St. Louis. Sorry, but I, I guess I, I guess it all built up for me, okay? I waited long enough for it to build up for me.
Let, let me say one thing. One, the planning commission does not go out and
Let, let me say one thing. One, the planning commission does not go out and seek petitions. And under St. Louis County ordinances, anyone has the right to bring in and ask for anything they want. They can be discouraged from doing it, but we can't stop them from going forward with it.
So let me go ahead and buy this property and I'll put a, a Chippendales burlesque in.
Well, that doesn't mean you're gonna get it.
Well, no, but, but again, a lot of times with the planning commission, sometimes, and I've seen it in the past, they just go ahead and let, you know, whatever, we'll just change it because they've already, already bought the property. That's our beef. That, the residents, we pay, we pay for you guys. That's our beef. That is our beef. That is our beef.
The property or not has no bearing on whether we say yes or we say no. And as the defense of this, of this commission, several years back, we had a ground swell of check cashing places that wanted to go into Afton. And we said, no. And we did that in conjunction in listening to the Afton Chamber of Commerce. But we tried to protect.
What about, what about the people? That's a political, Afton Chamber of Commerce is a political arm. That's the problem. That's, that is my, that's my concern. Again, when the girl from Farmer, Farmer's Insurance says, well, I don't know why I shouldn't have this property because after all, the firefighters, we pay for the firefighters. The Chamber of Commerce, we pay for that. The, 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 the HOA. Again, you're dismissing the resi- dismissing the residents. Dismissing the residents in their neighborhoods. Cause you don't live here.
Ma'am, ma'am, can I speak for a moment, please? We're getting off track here. We are talking about the liquor store. We're not talking about the insurance agency. We're going over the.
But I had enough time to listen and I felt like they were, I guess I felt like they were being dismissed. You know, after all, I should, not only did I purchase this, but I, but, but what she was saying, not only did I purchase this, but all the firefighters, the Chamber of Commerce and, and this, that and the other. And not, like I said, the residents were being dismissed. That's how we feel. That's why we're frustrated. That's why we're aggravated. And again, we live here. We live here. That's all I'm saying. And that's why I don't like this Star Liquor and Tobacco. I, it's, it's the wrong thing for our area. We've got enough, we've got enough liquor stores. And he's got video lottery terminals and he'll have every darn thing.
Okay. We appreciate your comments.
Okay, next will be Cynthia Anderson. And when you've spoken, please click the raise hand button again to lower your hand since our list, our, we've got several speakers. Cynthia, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to inquire again what the hours are going to be for this location.
The gentleman said nine AM to nine PM.
Monday to Saturday.
Monday to Saturday. Okay, that's not what your Facebook says on your other location. It says nine AM to nine PM, Monday through Thursday, nine AM to ten PM, Friday and Saturday, and Sunday, nine AM to seven PM. And when you Google their other location, it says they're open till ten thirty, Monday through Saturday till, till ten thirty, Sunday till eight PM. So I would like some clarification on that because it sounds like they're gonna be open seven days a week.
We'll ask them to answer that when they come back up.
Okay, thank you. I'd also like to know about any type of signage that they plan on putting in. I live on Niles. I already see the signs from the Graboy's Plaza, from the Gold Coin place at the end of my street. I see the firehouse. You know, the firehouse is, is a lovely, lovely sight to see. Don't get me wrong. But I don't like looking out my windows and seeing neon signs in the middle of the night flashing at me, kind of like Bob's Liquor used to years ago. So I would like to know what type of signings they're going to use as well. I will say, I think this is completely unnecessary. There's, as you already said, there's at least two other liquor stores in the immediate area, one within a thousand feet. And there's plus, there's several others within a mile or two, including one of their other locations. I just looked to see how, how far away Star Liquors was. It's one point eight miles from my house and I am a block from their proposed second location. So I don't think it's necessary. This is already a dangerous intersection. Same with the other proposal that was spoken about earlier. With the slope of the street on Graboy, with Nine Mile and Graboy's Plaza being full now and, and very successful. We've got the firehouse right there. We've got the Weber Road where it merges into Graboy and then turns again into Weber. Besides the amount of regular traffic that turns onto and out of Niles every day, that is a main entrance into the subdivision for many, many streets behind that liquor store. Niles is the main entrance going into the subdivision. I know, I've lived here for fifty years. I know how many cars go down my street at all hours of the night. I think this will only increase the traffic and the accidents that are in this immediate area. We've had several fatal accidents at that intersection alone. I'm also concerned about the increased trash. Every day I go out and I, I wouldn't say every day, every week I go out and I pick up lottery scratchers that are out in the street, just people throwing them out in the street. I think that will increase if you put in a store that sells them, you know, a block from my house. I'm also concerned, I was told that this was also going to be a check cashing place. Is that, is that, I'd also like confirmation on that. I'm sorry.
We will ask them to address that.
Yeah, we can clarify that, okay.
Well, wait till you come back up.
Okay. I know areas with numerous liquor stores are known to have increased crime rates, including violent crimes. I think we have plenty of liquor stores in Afton. I think this is completely unnecessary. I'm concerned about our property values going down. You know, we've got a gold, we've already got a gold store at one part of our, our entrance into the neighborhood. Now we'll have a liquor store on the other side of the street. I think that just makes our, our neighborhood look rundown when it is actually not. Like I said, this stretch of Graboy's has been run down for many, many years and I have seen it go down to its worst condition. And it's finally turning around and it's becoming a desirable destination for the entire area. And I think bringing in yet another liquor store moves the neighborhood in the wrong direction. I'm all for having new businesses come to Afton, but I would like to see ones that are reflective of the area and family-friendly. I don't think this is right for the location. I don't think anybody wants a liquor store or a cash, a check cash, check, check cashing store, excuse me, at the entrance of, to their neighborhood, especially when there's already the gold store on the other side of the entrance. That's another eye sore. As I mentioned, Niles is the main entrance into the neighborhood. And I'd like to see a more appropriate subdivision entrance put into place because it is such a main entrance into this neighborhood. And I would love to see some type of green space in that area instead of having another store, especially one that, that brings no value to Afton. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next will be Paul Budd. Paul, you are unmuted to give your comments.
All right. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Thank you guys for taking the comments. And I just wanted to voice my opinion and I'm in agreement with the lady that just spoke. I'm a resident in this subdivision right back behind, you go in Niles, a lot of times we take that entrance to get to our subdivision. Me and my wife have lived here for five years now. And it's one of the nicest, I think, one of the nicest little subdivisions in Afton. It's, you know, I mean, there are some rundown places on Afton or on Graboy there, but when you get back into the subdivision, it's just nice. A lot of nice homes, a lot of families, a lot of older people. And so I would like to see that reflected in the kind of business that we get. I'd, I'd be fine with getting a, a nice business there, but the only thing is I would like to see something that is family-friendly. That's a good word. We have families here. We have, like I said, a lot of older people and we need something here that is family-friendly and not another liquor store. We just had that one and I was disappointed when I saw that the Barrel and Blends opened up right, right across the street. It's literally right across the street there. There's a Dirt Cheap already, let's see, less than a mile down the road. And then like that lady was saying, at less than two miles, you get the other Star, Star Liquor there. So you got that Nine Mile Garden, which has a little bar thing and there's a couple of bars already right there on Graboy. So we definitely don't need more liquor in the area or people that are coming to the area for their liquor or for their cigarillos or for their check cashing or whatever. I think it would, I think it would lower the property value. I think it would bring, you know, just undesirable type of people into the area, which would make us not feel safe. I don't, I mean, if there was more liquor stores, I don't even know if we would have bought this property back here. So you'll be deterring people that are looking for a nice, safe place to live. Nice, family-friendly place. So I would like to see something, you know, nice restaurant, nice little landmark, something really cool that we could be proud of on that corner. And that's what I'm hoping for and that's what I'm praying for. And that's my, my comment. And I thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, next will be Michael Burton. Michael, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Michael Burton. I'm the state representative for this area. And I first want to thank the Planning and Zoning Commission for, for listening to everybody's comments. I know your job is not easy. You know, Afton has really been making great strides in the community in the past few years. And it's been really just awesome to see with Nine Mile Garden, like it was spoken about. We have a new subdivision coming in. Beautiful golf course. It's, it's been just really awesome to see. And I think that putting a liquor store there really takes us back. I just don't feel like it's the, the right place for it. And as was mentioned before, you know, point seven miles away, you have Dirt Cheap, which, you know, sells everything that this liquor store would sell. I mean, it's right there. And then literally right across the street is a liquor store, Barrel Blends, Wine and Spirits. I mean, it's literally directly across the street. You know, I think there's some problems with their plans. I, I didn't see anything in their plan addressing the drainage issue, which normally should be in the plan at this point, I would think. The other location that they have, do have the lottery machines and there is a loophole you can get around to use those machines, but they are against the law in the state of Missouri and I, I don't want to see them in the Afton community. Most of the residents that I've spoken to oppose this proposal. By far, most residents oppose this proposal. So I hope the, the Planning and Zoning Commission really take that into account. And I, I feel for the gentleman that purchased this property. I, I really do, you know, but he waited, he delayed. And, you know, something else opened up. And I, I, I do feel for him, but it's just, it's just not the right place. And I would ask for the commission and the St. Louis County Council to not approve of the rezoning of this property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next will be Jim Meehan. Jim, you can go ahead with your comments.
Yes, thank you. I want to also say my, my gratitude for you guys listening to us tonight. And I do want to follow up with Representative Burton, some of his comments as well. But what I want to spend my little bit of time here is to, I, I, I think you've heard a lot of people say things about, hey, you know, if we have this, this could attract trouble, let's say. There is a lot, a lot of, of research on this. And I just want to read you a few of the, and I'm only gonna read the titles, okay? If you look up, if you Google, all right, the main thing you need to Google is alcohol outlet density. If you, there will be a ton of information. Information such as alcohol outlets, attractors of violence and disorder, all right, that was written for the Department of Justice, all right? We also have for the National Library of Medicine, access to alcohol outlets, outlets, alcohol consumptions and mental health from the, from like I say, the NI, the National Library of Medicine. The CDC literally has a pamphlet called Alcohol Outlet Density. Ohio State, how the density of bars, restaurants affects parents' alcohol use. From the Recovery Research Institute, adolescents growing up in neighborhoods with more liquor stores are more likely to drink. Michigan, the Mackinac Center, alcohol-related problems and retail density. Controls and alcohol outlet location and density, okay? The effectiveness of limiting alcohol density as a means of reducing excessive alcohol consumption and alcohol-related harms from the American Journal of Preventive Medicine. So you see the pattern here. EPI Research, measuring alcohol density and it's associated with alcohol-related morbidity. It's just on and on. The Journal of Alcohol and Drugs, the Violence and Prevention of Reducing Alcohol Access in Baltimore, Maryland. Every city deals with this. I do want to read one small part from the very first one I, I said, the alcohol outlets and attractors of violence. Okay, that states in its conclusion, in general, this study found strong evidence that high densities of both on-premise and off-premise outlets are associated with high levels of violence and disorder. Now specifically, what the business that wants to start here is what's called an off-premise. On-premise are bars, off-premise are usually retail stores. Off-premise outlets do not significantly impact aggravated assault in any of the models that they examine. That's great. However, it says, off-premises are significantly associated with an increase in calls for domestic violence. What I am proposing to you is that, okay, we can open another liquor store, but what the, what's the net effect will be on this community a couple of years down the road? I agree with Representative Burton. I feel very sorry for these people to not have maybe gotten their store open before Barrel Blends. Cause we'd be arguing against Barrel Blends at this moment right now, all right? You look, we have three on-premise and three off-premise locations within a quarter mile of this very location. It's been brought up to the thousand feet away. There is a liquor store, right? Now, I and myself, as I look at the screen in front of me, I am the neighbor of the neighbor. Okay, you can see my property on this screen. So not only am I concerned about the effects of what we, I've just cited, all these research studies, which by the way, I'll send to any one of you members, if you need it, I can send you all this information or you could Google it yourself, either way. But I'm also worried about some of the things that you guys have brought up. For example, lighting. There is a lot of light in this area right now. If there's extra lighting, that's going to disrupt my family and of course, the family next to me. Obviously increased traffic. Now, any business is gonna bring that. I'm, I'm not worried about the increased traffic because, you know, we want this to thrive, to have a business there. And again, I am not at all against the people who want to bring this business. I am not against them at all. I am against the business itself. Another alcohol establishment will, will bring more trouble to our community. We don't need that. We do need something else in that area. I do like somebody had an idea of possibly a small park or something. I think that'd be great, but any other business, to be honest with you. All right, there might be some other businesses that we have problems with too as well. But this, with this much research out there, so much research and saying basically more alcohol outlets that you have in your area, the more problems you are going to have. Please, I beg you to read the resource, research before you make your decision. It is my humble opinion. It is my hu- humble opinion, a wrong move for Afton. For all the other people who have talked before me, I think they're dead on. We have been, I've been here for, we've been here for 20 years now and we have seen the turnaround. You know, we have seen that Afton is starting to.
Mr. Chair, that's three minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're starting to gentrify, but I'll, I'll, I'll stay with that. Please read the research in your decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next will be, uh, Chairess Doyle. Ms. Doyle, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Thank you. Uh, I'm really mirroring what has been said in the last number of, uh, uh. Callers that, to me, this is a very family, uh, neighborhood. And whenever you drive through areas that have, uh, an unusual number of liquor stores. I don't think anybody ever gets like a warm and fuzzy feeling about that. You know, it's, you always think of it as a negative. And I think that's what most people think of when they see a neighborhood with, uh. You know, significant number of liquor stores in a very small concentrated area, which this would be. We already have a lovely family type environment with a nine mile garden, which I think has been a real plus to the area. And certainly offers alcohol options. And then we've got, like everyone else has said, directly across the street. From this proposed store, uh, liquor store and then the other store just, you know, steps down the street. Just too many liquor stores in the same area. I can't see one single plus. To this proposed business in this area. It, you know, it was. Formerly the office supply store, the property was always kept, you know, pretty nice and neat and. But not, nothing negative as far as like a family neighborhood environment would be. This would be a definite negative and what kind of a message are you sending to kids? You know, in this area that is, you know, pretty, pretty significant is, as far as the number of young children go. That you need this many liquor stores. So we are 100% opposed to a liquor store being. In that particular site. And it just seems like it's a nice, significant property that would. Be a great location for something more family oriented. And that's what we're hoping for.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next will be Marilyn Beck. Marilyn, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Hi, I will be free. Thank you very much for taking your time. I'm gonna mirror probably pretty much what everyone else has said. Um, I'm opposed to the liquor store because of the, um, options already. On Graboy, which is Barrel Blends, QT, um, Circle K, Dirt Cheap. Um, also if this location is going to be, uh, check cashing facility, we have the lovely yellow check building. Um, down the road, actually it's next door to this. Um, and another check cashing facility on, uh, Grabaway and 21. And I believe that it won't fit the neighborhood because if it mirrors what's at, um, Marion Plaza, they have the LED rope lighting. Which is just an eyesore. And this is pretty much residential behind it. Um, just want to say that the Afton community has worked extremely hard in the past few years, if not in the, the last decade to revi-. Revitalize the Graboy corridor. Uh, we don't need another liquor store or check cashing facility that preys on some of our most vulnerable. Neighbors. So I strongly urge you to oppose it. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Okay, next will be Kelly P. Kelly, you are unmuted to give your comments. And if you could just, uh, give me your last name for the record, please.
Okay, hi, my name is Kelly Palmer. Thank you. I am a lifelong resident of Afton. I live near this area and it, it does not need a second liquor store, especially right across the street from an already existing liquor store. We're attracting more businesses to the Afton area and we're in a position to be more selective about which businesses we want in our community. I've been to Barrel Blend several times and they offer all that this area needs as far as liquor, wine, beer and spirits. There's no need for an additional liquor store. I also agree with the other speakers that that stretch of Graboy is very busy and it continues to become more and more dangerous. With traffic and left turns into business and neighborhoods. I'm asking for you not to approve this and thank you for your time.
Hey, thank you.
Okay, next will be Drusilla Morgan. Drusilla, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Thank you. I understand kind of what you're going through as commissioners. One of my degrees is actually in. Geography with an emphasis on urban planning. With that background, I have a problem with this business, especially if it does include check cashing. Certain businesses drag down your community. Check cashing, pawn shops, title loans, gold sales. Those types of businesses are not the businesses that you want in a growing community. They cause. Your property values to go down. They affect the other types of businesses that you can have come in. They pull your land and your community out of prime contention for. New medical facilities, for new grocery stores. You see this when you look at North County. They have fewer grocery stores and more convenience stores out there. They're a food desert up there. If we continue to allow these types of businesses to come into Afton, we too could become a food desert. I've lived in Afton for 15 years now and I'm very pleased with some of the changes that we've seen in the strip along Grabaway. I do have concerns about the traffic and the traffic problems. There have been a number of very serious accidents in that area. And I think that that needs to take, go into consideration. And I also think that the comments that were made about the Chamber of Congress being against. More check cashing places needs to be considered in this case as well. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Mr. Hilsinger, if I may just inter- I just, I just before, I just want to assure residents, um, that a check cashing is not going to be permitted at this site. They did not request the right for a check cashing facility and it is a separate use. Uh, so a check cashing facility is not what will be going into the site. They haven't requested it and it won't be permitted. So I just wanted that to be. Um, residents to be aware of that as they continue to make their comments. Thank you, Mr. Hilsinger.
Alright, thank you.
Next will be Effie, and if you'd state your last name for the record. Oh, Effie, I don't see that your microphone is connected, so if you would try to connect it, we will come back to you. Um, next will be Megan. Uh, Megan, if you'd state your last name for the record.
It's Obermilk.
Okay, please go ahead with your comments.
Um, so I am 100% against this business coming into our area like everyone else. We have several liquor stores. Um, to me, even though the gentleman sounded very unclear about every question that was asked to him. As far as the hours, what they would be selling, um, the other location sells. A decent amount of tobacco products that are not used for tobacco. They sell lots of pipes, lots of hookahs. Um, it's more like a head shop than a liquor store. It's like they just sell a little bit of liquor so that they can deem that it's a liquor store. Um, this is definitely not something that Afton wants in their community. Um. Anybody who wants any liquor, beer or candy can go to one of the three liquor stores. Or they can go to Shell, or they can go to QT. This is definitely not something that is wanted or needed. Anywhere near this subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next will be Dan Lewandowski. Dan, you are unmuted to make your comments.
Thank you. Um, I would just like to reiterate what everybody has said so far. My wife and I have personally been members of the Afton community for, oh, going on 38 years now. Uh, we moved to Afton because my mom's family was from Afton. They went to school here. Uh, her parents, her grandparents all lived here and we felt we were coming back. To a community we were familiar with. And, um. I wholeheartedly agree with all these comments that have been against. A liquor store. I would like to see it, you know, maybe be a coffee shop or another small restaurant. We've, eh, but no liquor store. We don't need them. You, like, everybody has said, there's. One right across the street and, and three within the community, plus QT, plus, uh. What's the other one? Quick Trip. And, uh, you know, you can buy liquor at the grocery store. So there's no need for another liquor store. So my vote is no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I, it, it appears that is all of the, uh, hands that have been raised. Uh, if anyone would like to submit written comment. Uh, you can send it to planning@stlewiscountymo.gov. That's planning@stlewiscountymo, mo.gov. But that was all of the speakers at this time.
Okay, petitioner?
Oh, I'm sorry, Effie thinks her s- one week, we skipped, thinks her. Her mic is working now.
Alright, go ahead.
Effie? Can you hear us? Effie, I'm not hearing you. But you, uh, I will put the email for written comments into.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Oh, there she is. Okay, yes. Effie, what's your last name?
Sidiropolis.
Can you spell that for me, please?
S-I-D-I-R-O-P, like Peter, O-U-L-O-S.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you. So I want to thank everybody's time, um, for just listening to all the, uh, the stakeholders and, um. What the neighbors are saying and for the commissioner for organizing this. Um, I know it takes a lot of time and effort. Um. But, um, I just want to reiterate what many of the residents said. Um, I am currently a resident living on Niles. And that is just down the street and on the corner. And, you know, I have two concerns. Um. Like I said, um, I'm repeating what some of the residents have said, quite a few of them have said, and their concern is that a liquor store, I haven't even. I've just moved back, um, to Afton, um, after being away, but I grew up in Afton area. I'm very familiar with it. And, um, uh, I was a child and I grew up in the area, moved away and came back because, um, I, I just enjoyed the area. And there's just many wonderful things that have been, um, you know, growing in the community. Um. New homes being built, homes being rehabbed, um, nice businesses coming for families. It's a very family-friendly environment. Um, you know, a lot's been going in with our schools and, um, just in, in general parks and stuff. And being a resident, um, with one liquor store just opening, I, I don't really know much about the three, what, the 1,000 foot, um. Zoning ordinance, um, of another liquor store being just open, not even within the last six months to a year. Um. Uh, you know, it causes a lot of safety concerns for me also. Not only the statistics of another liquor store coming in and, um. Tobacco, but they have another location not that far, uh, which is fine. Um, but. I think it's just a bad location for a business that's going to have, it, it's a small lot. And that's a quick thing. People are coming in quick, people are leaving quick. Um, and it's already an issue because right now, we have so many, like. Many people have said, Niles is a, a primary street to many houses and subdivisions and back in our area. And there's a high volume of kids walking, people walking their dogs regularly, d- day and night, um, all days of the week. Um. And so with just the amount of pedestrian traffic and there not being any lights or crosswalks in, at that intersection. Um, and there's just a lot of people going over, people walk down to the canteen, the food trucks, the nine mile garden, that strip mall. And like I said, there's just too much traffic and in a convenience store, it's a quick stop place. People are coming in, picking up, zipping out. Picking up, zipping in, zipping out. And right now, there's already the problem that when you come at the end of Niles and you're turning. Um, I guess it's southbound to go on to Graboy, you're trying to turn a left at that intersection, it kind of tees off if you look at the pictures. So when you're coming off of Niles and you're trying to make a left, you already have the issue of everybody using that parking lot to make a right. And they're cutting through that, that business parking lot, that vacant property now. Because people don't want to wait behind multiple cars that are trying to turn left. So you already have that issue on top of it being a small lot for a business. That has a high volume of traffic coming in and out consistently. It's not like a business that, it's somebody like a staff of two or three people working all day. Or people coming in to frequent the business for long hours. So, you know, there, there's a lot of families in the area. Um, like I said, uh, multiple times, you know, people are saying there's another liquor store, there's the QT, there's plenty of options, but. A package liquor store, and that's all it is. And, and on, people are bringing up slot machines and stuff. I haven't been to their other business or their location, but. It just seems like it's getting to be too much. And we're looking to buy in this area. I mean, so far, we'd like to live in Afton. We like that we can. Be in a community where we can walk and get lunch. We can walk to go get, uh, you know, ice cream or, you know. Go to some of the local bakeries or walk to church and then to have, you know, to where.
We're, we're over three minutes.
Okay, yeah, because I mean, I have teenagers that, you know, that are walking across and it's just, it gets to be too much. So I'm, I'm not for this petition if you can mark me down as a no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it now?
That's it. That's all our speakers.
One. One, uh, comment for clarification. Members of the Planning Commission are not employees of St. Louis County. And do not receive a salary for being on the Planning Commission. So, that being said, uh, is petitioner, can you come back up?
Yes, I'm here.
Some clarifications, our.
Yeah, I just spoke with the owner and, uh, they clarified to me that they are working Monday through Sunday and from nine to 10 p.m.
Okay, considerably different signage.
Signage, uh, they said they're going to make sure that whatever signage they have, they will not be too glaring. So that's the understanding I have.
Um, you looking for a monument sign? You looking? For a sign on a pole?
It's going to be, eh, it's going to be a sign that is just against the, the front. It's not going to be like any standalone sign. It's going to be the sign that I, against the building, so the front, eh, the front edge and of the building. And, uh, uh, that's his plan. You know, if you want to put any neon lights, you know, any glaring something that, you know. Kind of blink off and on and stuff like that.
Okay, and the last one was already addressed by, uh. Our director, check cashing. If this was to be approved, uh.
Uh, my understanding, I understand there's no check cashing there, but what they said, they, in addition to legal, they will be selling fountain drinks. They'll be doing lot, they'll lot, selling lottery tickets. And also to do some groceries. That's about it, but, eh, you know.
Okay. Commissioners, anything else? I have to ask, just for my own clarification, and you asked him and he said the hours were what? What did you say the hours were?
Nine a.m. To 10 p.m.
Monday through. Monday through Saturday?
Yeah.
Okay, initially, initially, that's not what you said.
I know, well, that's what I said, I stand corrected on that. Uh, inquired and, eh, they gave me the new hours, you know.
You did say seven days a week though, didn't you? Did I hear that?
Yeah, seven days a week, yes.
Okay, anybody else? Alright, seeing none, that concludes this hearing. I'd like to thank everyone for their participation and for giving us their comments. And with that, uh, we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. And we are adjourned. Thank you.
Have a nice night, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.